Hey there team, so starting this one a little bit differently. So I know that I have today a fight between Mithrum and Finarfen. So Grey Elves of Mithrum and Finarfen. You were these guys? Nope, nope. There, cool. So Finarfen, I do, well, again, my information is pretty outdated. I just kind of want to do a quick like pass over the roster before we actually start, just so I've got a general idea of what these units are instead of wildly guessing what is a bodyguard and what isn't. So Finarfen maybe has changed. I remember the Wardens of Nargathron, yeah, the great Pike unit there. And we've got these Stalkers, are they javelins or? Oh no, they're not, they're, oh yeah, I've seen these guys, yeah, they're like little assassin looking boys. Yeah, little two blades, real agile guys, very, very nice. Speed 1.25, so they're a bit swift. Defenders, okay, they are javelin throwing spears by the looks of things. Bridge wards, oh wait, oh no, sorry, no, wardens are not. It's the bridge wards I was thinking of. Wardens seem to just be a solid looking shield wall situation. Swordsman with their javelins. As in the Sartor, they are a two hit point. Company of Prince Gwendor, that's like the Regent of Renown, I think we were going for here. But what are they originally renowned off? Are they like a swordsman of Tal'th Durnan type five, just better and so on, but without the jabs? Arquenny, of course. Yeah, well, so these are two sort of bodyguard units there. Marksmen of Nargathron, I think that they do have a special ability, multi-shot, yeah, multi-shot arrows, great. Okay, cool, so yeah, I remember, I remember most of this. Something I've not seen are the scorpions and I know that there's some scorpions in some of these battles. I had a quick glance over some of them, so it'll be cool to see them kicking about. And the Grey Elves, oh, wait a second. The Grey Elves of Mithrum. Oh, I was confusing it with the Avary, okay, the Grey Elves of Mithrum. Okay, I've seen the Tunnel Runners. Oh, fantastic, okay, they've got, they've got a relentless unit. So that'll be fun to see if they're brought. Look out, general archers. Lots of, okay, a fair bit of archers, or no, no, not too many. I like these Outlaws of Hithlun, that's kind of cool vibe. What does scout mean? That's something that I'm not certain about, what the scout feature does. Oh, and then, so what are, do they have a two hit point unit? Apart from, of course, yeah, they're two hit points, they're sort of Berserkers are two hit points. But I'm not seeing a, these guys are their monster hunters. But they don't, goodness me, they're incredibly defensive. They're absolute heroes, but they don't have two hit points. Interesting. And then, goodness me, they're also wild. Okay, cool, so, but they don't seem to have a two hit points or bodyguard elite. Like, so I'm looking at this, I don't know where I would put my general. I'd most likely, I mean, consider putting him there, but at the same time, I would probably want to use that. I'd maybe just have to have him in a, in a, in a crystal arrows, okay. Very cool, okay, so yeah, well, I just wanted to have a quick glance over it before we start. Go, and then we'll jump straight into it. Hey there team, back to some of this more fast-paced, well, fast-paced, intense Selmarillion learning experience for me. One thing I was wondering for Panthan here is, yeah, where he was going to pop his general for this Mithrum force. As I say, we don't really have any two hit point units for Mithrum. Now, not that you have to put your general in two hit points. Some of my most like successful situations, I've had them in, you know, a unit of random spears or something like that. But it's nice to know that it's an option to have a two hit point bodyguard. These Tunnel Runners, I really think they've got a cool look about them. I think there, yeah, there's some really badass looking dudes. So I'm excited to see how they're actually going to be performing on the fields here. You know, of course, I'm suspecting they're going to be able to rip and tear if we, if we get like a charge on something light. But, you know, no matter what, you know, after the initial chaos of an attack settles, you always end up with a nice organized, well, organized, but you tend to get a front developing and the grind really occurs. And that's when some of these lighter units like that sort of falter. So it'd be cool to see how that, how they perform. Again, Panthan doing this sort of, he likes to do his shield walls. I tend not to really do shield wall in field battles. It does make it much more different for enemies to say push through you and gives you the option during a fight to say do a little mid-fight breach of a line, which can be super effective, it can be really, really nice to just burst open a line. But, and it's kind of cool, it's such a minor thing. But it's kind of nice to have the flags right in the middle of the formations as well, that looks kind of cool. I enjoy that. The banners being included is quite a recent thing for, well, in terms of, yeah, in time of recording. I think it's quite a recent thing in terms of Selm, like for a long while, we didn't actually have banners in them. I mean, I, I'm pretty neutral on the topic. I like the banners, but you know, at the same time, I don't, I don't think we need them. Oh, they're very cool, I love these shields, goodness sake, the Geldsmith of Androth. There, I didn't actually check what the shield value was, I wonder if there's anything fancy and special like that. But again, yes, these eagle-eyed of Androth out front. This very, ooh, yeah, okay, no, no, I just, I was wondering what that was, the real blue tinge of the, of that shield just sort of jumps at me every time I look at it. We're two times speed for a second. Again, it looks like we're on this, we're on the same forested map or maybe, maybe a bit different. No, definitely, definitely different, yeah, you're seeing the much, oh no. Where did we have? We had like the cavalry engagement over on the right side, no, this must be a different one. They're definitely, once again, very forested, but much more, much more sloping. Sorry about the disappearing trees, again, just not too sure what's causing that. But either way, as I say, the focus of these videos is the infantry, well, not the infantry clashes, is the unit clashing. Primary concern, what primary focus would be? Is just to try and know what these units can and can't do in these fights. Let's go to 0.4 speed for now, should be okay. We'll have a little bit as they're getting ready to clash. And Finarfen, let's say a unit, what an army that I remember playing back in the day. So I should be, you know, a little less surprised than some, than some situations here. The archers of Tal'th Durnan up front behind them, these swordsmen. I do like, you know, it's very sort of Roman-esque, sort of, you know, Rome Total War back in those days of chucking your javelins, a few, a few quick javelin spores, throwing yourself into melee is always good. These marksmen of Nargathron, I forget, they are awesome looking, aren't they? Goodness me, the Arquenny, I'm just trying to think, the Arquenny, no, no, I think the Arquenny looks still the same. I don't know if their models changed since I last saw them. Defenders of Tal'th Durnan again, and more of them. Oh, sorry, these are the defenders, not the swordsmen, so the spear variant. But once again, they do have their little javelins. As I say, it's good and mad when it comes to, comes to like spears with javelins, I always worry. Oh, it's so interesting, Lord Bellegost is doing the same thing with his spearmen. He's, he's starting with them in, in shield wall. He's got them in much tighter shield walls though, so I'm wondering, is his plan to? Let me just take one shot of that. Is his plan going to be to burst through with them instead of just holding the line? And marksmen of Nargathron at the back. But again, it allows you to hold the line better, so even, yeah, he might just be packing them up together a little bit for now. Oh, bridge wards, we didn't even spot those guys, two units of bridge wards as well. So those pikes are going to allow, oh, that's interesting, why do they have that? They don't have like, their stance is a bit different than it is in say, you know, standard medieval II or Reforged, I believe, they're, they've got this, they're all pointing upward. And this, again, like kind of a, sort of this Roman-esque look, I think that's gorgeous, the way it's sort of coming up over their helmets and so on. But we'll see what that actually looks like in a fight. If that's just sort of their passive, well, passive stance. And then when they really clash, they do go back down to the typical Pike formation. So when your enemy has pikes and you don't, when your enemy has, well, pikes and you don't have any sort of phalanx, that's a very scary situation. So we're gonna, we're gonna either really have to shoot down those, and those bridge wards are quite solid as well. They're not, they're not like very fragile pikes, they're quite high quality boys. So we'll see what we are able to accomplish here. Right now, I mean, if I was to choose one of the armies, I would be wanting to play as, as Bellegost's army right now. We're opening up straight away with these archers of Tal'th Durnan into the eagle-eyed of Androth, or sorry, Androth, which again, I didn't actually, because I'm not going to remember all the stats. When I, when I look through the stats sort of beforehand, I'm just kind of getting a, getting a general grasp of the units and their, and their class. But yeah, from general aesthetic though, these eagle-eyed are not going to really be holding their own as well in a proper elongated skirmish fight with the archers of Tal'th Durnan. Just because the archers of Tal'th Durnan have much more of a present armor on them. But as I said with the thing with Selm, I get the vibe generally, it's not as built around like long skirmish engagements before a fight. Ammunition is a much more, yeah, there's, there's much less of it. Dear me, these eagle-eyed have been getting absolutely riddled though, down to 70 already. 69 over, well, yeah, there's just one stretched out unit, he has stretched them out now, they weren't stretched out at the start. Because of that though, so now the wardens are going to be rushing on forward. These are the guys that are just dedicated spear boys and they're going to be making contact with these archers. He's not able to pull them back in time, so yeah, they're just going to get skewered down here. Be a damn shame if Panthan ended up losing them to a rout or something like that. But no, it's nice to, nice to take those opportunities, I'm pretty sure Finarfen doesn't have any sort of cavalry. We would have seen that at the very start of this, start of this fight when we had a look through the rosters. But I'm pretty sure they do not have any cav, that's sort of their vibe. So you kind of have to use your, like that's the type of thing that you'd want to get a little lancer unit, just outsmash those guys down. But has that been, yeah, I mean, down to 41, chase them back, stop them getting this sort of close range. And it caused a little bit of chaos while he's moved up the rest of his forces. Let's zoom in just a little bit, yeah, we can see that. And definitely in a 1v1, it's nice to just bring the map in straight away unless, because this one is more traditional. Something I've always enjoyed, like it's quite a fun thing to fight Panthan for, because he likes to split his army up. You're not really sure where he's going to be and so on. He's, it's not just like two armies clashing, it's, it's all battlefield of combat. So it's, it's quite cool and quite, quite an experience to go against. But it looks like today he has just gone for a more consolidated force. So coming around the flank, he has managed to sort of reposition himself over here and he's coming barreling on in. So we'll see how these sentries do up against the likes of the defenders. Defenders again, getting that javelin volley in straight away. It was 1, 4, 3 before. Oh, and then not, okay, right, that's a good riddling there, but that was, was that it? Or is there some more, let me close down for a sec. See, I really liked that there from Bellegost, but then Bellegost just sort of jolted them out of position for a second. I don't quite know what he was up to there and, and that's allowed the sentries to get that really nice little charge off. Sort of even the odds that were created. Ah, looks like he was sort of trying to gather everybody up to position. Okay, that's kind of cool, Panthan sort of sent them in there to engage part of it. Makes it a lot more frustrating for Bellegost to try and reposition now. Swordsman, again, more javelins, oh, I like these, I like that some of them are hooded, that looks really cool. Some of their hooded, some of them have the, have this nice feathered helmet to them. Just adjusting my headphones there. Again, I mean, these javelin volleys are going to be coming either into their face or to their left side, so these shields are coming into play. So we're not seeing like mass casualties, but it's whittling, you know, it's wearing down the line a little bit. It's just causing this, this little bit of damage all the way across, which is gonna, you know, that's gonna help add up when we, when we really start clawing into it. But it looks like Bellegost, again, he's not really willing to take that fight yet. He still has more javelins to spin, I think he really wants to. Which I get, but in my, in my memory, you know, the javelins that these guys have is, is not like too dramatic. But at the same time, he's not really suffering anything for running back. He seems to be, you know, he seems to be going okay with them, he's got his bridge wards, okay. So they've sort of run straight into the bridge wards, the sentries looked like they were trying to barrel through, still chase the swordsmen, but no, they are going to get gutted. I don't think I have to, yeah, I'm pretty damn sure that they're going to be losing very quickly to the likes of the bridge wards. Now let's zoom in for a tiny bit more on that. So I don't think, yeah, it'll just be a quick matter of time there. Sentries, more sentries from Panthan getting around the flank, but we need something, something fancy over here if we're going to deal with the bridge wards. And engaging these Scion, oh, sorry, did I see the Scions, where are they? They're, okay, so these, these fanatics or, or, well, I don't want to say the fanatic, I don't really know much about them. Goodness sake, look at those guys, they've got that massive hammer, very cool. So yeah, sort of Berserker unit, so they are relentless, so they can't really be staggered, they will just keep hitting, keep smacking. And again, Bellegost playing quite, quite mobile, more than happy to sort of keep losing ground in order to, to get these sort of fights that he wants. Bridge wards again, barely budging. Even with this sort of backstab from the sentries, you can see that these sentries are in guard mode. So they're, I would have maybe not wanted them in guard mode for this situation, so that they could be fully surrounding that line. But this will be a kind of a cool test to see just the, because they're getting, you know, an attack from the front and side and I think soon to the back as well. The company of Prince Gwendor is right on the side of the sentries here again, once again, they're in guard mode. So they're not really all engaging, they're just holding this formation and a few of them are keeping this line back. Right now, that's actually quite a good thing, because obviously Bellegost is focusing other parts of the line. He's not forced them to charge on forward, they're just taking the fight and, and doing a little slow grind, which right now they don't seem to be enjoying. What is he trying to maybe do his damage with? But yeah, like, because that's the thing right now with Panthan, I'm just not sure what he's really hitting. Or what, you know, what he's intending to do here. Shots coming through, still engaging the archers of Tal'th Durnan. Just to help bring them down. The infantry will be his main focus right now, great tunnel runners. Some javelins coming over, oh, good. Yeah, so I mean, if we can get javelins into the bridge wards, that's exactly what we want. But what are these tunnel runners going to be capable of, I wonder? Oh, they have got, oh no, they're axes, I thought they were hammers there for a sec. Yeah, so engaging, taking some shots, we're seeing that split shot fire. Yeah, that's fine, we knew that they did that. And the likes of the tunnel runners, I'm assuming would get ripped up by that. So no, he's got them just pushing, pushing straight up. He's, it's a very, it's quite a muddle, like there is clearly a front line, but it's, it's, there's steps to it, there's stages, which is quite nice. Swordsman of Tal'th Durnan, it seemed to be like they're, they're holding against the geldsmen, but the geldsmen are definitely grinding this down. But that little backstab by the wardens of Nargathron might change that game. Over the rest of it, oh, yeah, still more javelins. So it's actually, I guess there's a lot more javelins from the swordsmen of Tal'th Durnan than I, than I was thinking. You know, I would have been really tempted to have just engaged, you know, when that first rush came in, I would have been tempted to have just kept my swordsmen there and fought it out. But I think it probably, you know, clearly is, is a good idea to have tried to get them back, to make sure that you use that ammunition. That's what part of your cost is, you know, that's what they're, that's what they're built for. So you need to get that used. Oh no, I died, oh wait, he's back up. Man immediately got back up, I thought you were dead there, well done lad, you just took out a bridge ward, very nice, about yourself. It sounded so polite, but no, that was really good. Some tunnel runners that got left behind clashing away here. So defenders, again, defenders actually really struggling against the sentries, okay. I wonder why that is, or is, oh no, no, they're sort of back now. Yeah, that must have just been a, no, they're both, both are having victory, good for them, everybody's having fun today. Ah, shore riders, shore riders, we missed these guys. So some little jav cav, you'd maybe want to get, oh, I was going to say you'd want to get a little bit closer with them, but in all honesty, it doesn't look like he's really needed to. The, the boys are getting rinsed and the Arquenny are here. So if we could move, maybe if we could get a little bit closer with the, with the shore runners. We'd hit the Arquenny, of course, anytime there's a little, little pause, I'm just taking a gulp of tea or something. You know, you'd maybe want to run up here, try and get some, some hits, but they have done some very quick damage and that's to the right side as well, so whatever sort of shield value is required, what is available to these guys, that is not counting. Okay, ooh, 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 what was that? Was that their Arquenny just getting ordered to do a little charge in maybe? Swordsman coming down after using up their javelins. How is this clash going? Right, so the swordbearers of Mithrum go in toe-to-toe with the swordsmen of Tal'th Durnan. The swordsmen of Mithrum really seem to be, you know, a good step above here, at least are handling themselves pretty damn well. The archers over there on the right flank of it, even some tunnel runners around here. Just flanking around the lines, ripping up into these stalkers, seem to be doing pretty well. Yeah, okay, well, they're dropping, they're dropping some of these guys pretty damn quick. Um, over here, the last few reserves. Yeah, because Bellegost was, you know, using up his ammunition and he was definitely keeping his men in reserve quite a bit more, that's maybe left him in a bit of a precarious spot, even with the bridge wards on the front line. These bridge wards that are fighting back-to-back, it's nice when your pikes do end up doing that, they can do some great work. But it's always scary, because then you try and order them to do something else and they end up freaking out. They end up getting stabbed in the back and ripped to pieces. Hunters of Mithrum are forward there now. Looks like they are, oh, they pulled out some swords and shields, which is great to see. Oh, they might have been javelins, I think the hunters were javelins, not, not archers. Yeah, the archers were the eagle eyes, yeah, or eagle-eyed. Still the, okay, right, so Mithrum seems to be actually doing pretty well as this like front right, as this sort of frontline grinding force, which kind of is surprising. But, you know, because they, they do have this sort of more, more, more light look, but I think maybe they're, you know, because of this, this aggressive ability from them, it's working out. It's kind of the vibe of like, it doesn't really matter if the enemy, enemy can do damage to you if you kill them verse. Type of thing, if you're doing too much damage to them. More swordsmen of Tal'th Durnan, and maybe that's the problem for right now for Bellegost, he doesn't, even though his enemy is quite fragile in some places, he doesn't really have like the major killing power. I think he's, he's had a lot of javelins, but they've not really had the major effect that he was needing. And his, his forces are, like his army composition seems to be more built around. Send down to 50%, his forces seem to be more built around like holding line, grinding rather than, yeah, rather than sort of this, this aggressive play. Scions are still alive, they're still kicking. So that is nice to see, as, I don't know if you lose control of them, I know with the, um, Haloth? Yeah, the Haloth Berserkers, they, you do, you know, once you order them in, they're gone. Their, their vibe and they're doing their thing. I'd assume maybe these elves are perhaps a little bit more composed, you might be able to keep, keep them together. Shore riders into the marksmen of Nargathron. But yeah, it looks like they're just coming in with that general like melee cavalry char, well, not melee cavalry, but standard horse charge at this point. Which is, is doing something, I've noticed like, yeah, because you saw, I was trying to do the heck out of that with the, with the wolf riders and getting very, very little effect and that, that came out with two sort of decent charges there. Hasn't really done too much, but the marksmen again, they're nicely armored. They are elves, so they've probably got a decent defensive ability, which is going to be able to shrug off a lot of that, that damage. Remember the first time I charged a unit of Elven Swordmasters in Reforged? Goodness me, I was, I was shocked, I was like, how didn't I kill all of them? But it's just because you charge them right to the face, they still get that defensive skill bonus to protect them against it. Goodness me, it was doji. I got ripped to pieces. Tunnel runners still there, starting to really get low on their numbers and yeah, you're seeing this one dropping there. But overall, up against these swordsmen of Tal'th Durnan, the tunnel runners alongside, oh, there's still some Scions in there too. It's, it's just beyond what these swordsmen are capable of. I say that as this victory is a distinct possibility, but I think that just seems to rise for them now and again. I think they are getting busted down quite quickly. Over here, the wardens of Nargathron, having, fearing a good bit better. Up against their really, really quite thin line at some places. But this is where it really starts to thicken up, but that's, that's where the bridge wards are. Okay, how many bridge wards do we still have, 82? They're not enjoying that fight actually, which is quite a surprise. It's good, it's, you know, this is quite good, Panthan just hasn't kept sort of throwing his boys into the bridge wards. That's, yeah, I don't know who, I don't know who, what sort of silly billy does stuff like that, eh? But you're better off just not taking those fights that you don't have to, just sort of keep them in possession with however you can. But don't, don't just throw people in there into the grinder for the sake of it. Take the fights where you're winning and then hopefully flank him down later. Again, you're seeing this shield wall and, and guard mode strategy getting used by Panthan. Just to keep his boys in, in these formations. And then the last little fight over here, so this, this, oh, okay, I know we're on 0.7 speed, but it's, some of these fights have lasted quite a long time. You know, I guess it's just sort of showing, you know, none, neither, we don't have like a massive, massive aggressive situation going on here with either of the, of the units. But they've been fighting here for, for a good part of the battle and they're still kicking. Even with the shore riders right behind them, trying to hack them down, they're still all right. Tunnel runners mixed in amongst it. Oh, as we're down to 50% now as well. So no, company Gwendor, or Prince, company of Prince Gwendor, as I should say. Still about after all the damage that they've taken, they're still okay. I do, I mean, I'll probably, I'll be seeing this a lot, like, because so many of the units in Selmarillion are just absolutely gorgeous. They're very, very nice looking, they still sort of match this like Tolkien-esque aesthetic that a lot of us have in our heads. But, you know, they tap into, into, into more of, for me, I feel more of like this fantasy feel and it's, it's a cool, it's a cool world to, to fall into, it's a cool idea. Oh, we've got some of those split shots, those marksmen are either in guard mode or they freed themselves up. Might have just been one rogue, oh, no, no, where is he? Where did that come from? Oh, ah, okay, they are over here, there's still seven of them. The shore riders pulled away, they'll probably come back in, try and do a little bit of ping pong between these two units. They're, you know, they don't have any sort of lances, but that's all right, so seven. Okay, that was, that was pretty good then, you know, that was actually quite a bit of damage. But there's more marksmen of Nargathron over here. So that's a lot of split, split shot fire, you see again, the shore riders have been used over here to try and bring these guys down to, to some, some middling effect. I didn't actually see all these horse corpses over there, so that same amount of ammunition. So they have, they've lasted, that ammunition's lasted them a good bit. But I don't quite know how long they've actually been, been sending those shots off for. That's the general drop now for Bellegost. And that should not be too much longer there. So this is a real surprise to me, as I say, when I, when I looked at these armies at the start, I was like, yeah, I love the Finarfen army. I didn't actually see that, that cavalry force, that would have been a bit of a concern for me. And of course, countering cavalry as Finarfen's not easy. For me, for me, it's not easy, because I really liked having melee cavalry. I like to have a unit of melee cavalry, just to catch enemy cav. Whereas with Finarfen, you're really just trying to counter it with, with pikes, well, preferably not with pikes, but with your spearmen, with ranged units and so on, because that's really all you've got, that's all your choices for it. So it'll be fun to see what, yeah, because I know the boys have some interesting plans for, for like the campaign recruitment system and so on. So it'll be interesting, I'll just have this play out at one time speed, just so that we can watch over the, watch over the last fighters of the bridge wards and the wardens. But yeah, I know that the boys have some really cool plans for, for like the recruitment system, I think. But we're interested to see, you know, yeah, when you do like a Finarfen playthrough, are you going to be able to get access to cavalry somehow? Of course, not your own, but are you going to be able to get access to say a mercenary group? Are you going to be able to buy some mercenary cav? Or are you going to be able to get some, you know, troops at certain stages and various, various little bits and bobs like this, or due to, due to various trades and alliances and so on? Buildings or like, can you build outposts based on something else to, to get access to them? But yeah, that'd be, that'd be kind of cool, kind of quirky. I'm, I'm excited to see what we, what we've got cooking for all that. But no, that is, see, that was, that was a surprise for me. I, I thought maybe the, you know, these blue boys, or I should say these grey boys are, are a bit more sturdy than I, I gave them credit for at the start. As they've been able to, and Finarfen wasn't really able to get the, the proper punches in. And as I say, a lot of the stuff I'm saying here, this is just based on my, my initial observations right now. Whole, whole concept of these, of the videos this week is just for me to, to pick away at what I'm seeing happening and trying to make sense of it myself. But I will, after these videos have been recorded, of course, I will be putting some effort into and actually understanding the game a bit more, so that when I do proper casting later, I could be a bit more informed, a bit more, you know, explain things in a bit more detail, a bit better. It's good two times speed, over the last, would be these guys over here maybe? It's good two times speed. Over the last, be these guys over here maybe. Yeah, ah, the last, last few marksmen Nargathron, wanting to bring down these, uh, shore riders that have caused them so much bother. But yeah, um, as I say, these videos should all be recorded either today and tomorrow, that they're, that have been coming out, so I appreciate, as I say, every, every comment that people, that anybody's making, but it's, I won't be able to, I probably won't be changing too much. Um, or yeah, nothing, nothing major will be, will be changed with that until I, um, yeah, until, until I get into casting it properly, I think. Um, nice, nice. So what do we, what do we have here that was sort of really doing the da, so in numbers wise, okay, we were sort of the same numbers wise, which is, that's, that's good. Um, those swordbearers were, were kept pretty safe. Which you'd expect when you've got your general in with them. I think, yeah, it was these guys that kind of surprised me a bit. The, the Huin geldsmen. Yeah, with those axes, they really did some damn good work and that's, I, I didn't, I didn't quite see that coming. The Scions there. Yeah, I mean, I would have thought maybe a little bit more damage perhaps, but they were always mixed in amongst things. As I say, I don't know if they were running free, uh, lost control of, or if they are just relentless. You know, they, they might not be berserkers, they might just be relentless, they might be very, very powerful. Um, I see not too much, not too many archers arguably from either side, but definitely not from, uh, from the Mithrin side here. Um, some hunters there. Okay, cool. Oh, wow. Sure, yeah, so shore riders doing some great work with those javelins. That was the, and, and then little charging here and there afterwards. But yeah, I was, overall, I think I was quite impressed with those, those Huin geldsmen. They were really cool. Cool, thanks guys, and I will see you in the next one.